Happy New, uh, I think this is on, Happy New Year. It is the first meeting of 2023. I call this regularly scheduled January ninth, 2023 meeting to order unless there's an objection, seeing none. This meeting is called to order. Councilman Henigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Please rise if you're able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. Above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce one of our newest officers, Officer Mario Umana. Mario has joined us from the Smyrna Police Department where he worked, has worked as a police officer since 2019. Prior to that, he was employed as a photographer for Mazda of Roswell, and his previous work history includes some positions in photography and fitness. And he is a competitive MMA fighter. And so we're excited to have Mario on our team, and we know he's going to do a fantastic job.
Thank you very much for choosing Dunwoody. Our community is very grateful to have you. We appreciate your service and you let us know if there's anything we can do for you. Welcome to Dunwoody. And then Chiefs and your team and all that are not here, we are very grateful for how the situation at the mall was handled on Friday and the quick resolution to have the people that needed to be arrested, arrested. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you again. Congratulations. And it is National Law Enforcement Day. So congratulations on being sworn in on National Law Enforcement Day. And again, thank you all for your service and everyone helping resolve the situation at the mall quickly. Thank you. Now it's time for public comment. Tom Simon?
Tom Simon Stevens Walk. On Friday, January sixth, I learned that six trees were cut down on Tilly Mill in front of Stevens Walk. They are at the location of the proposed shared use path that the city wants to place on the east side of Tilly Mill between Womack and Mount Vernon Road. You may recall that I've spoken about this before. More recently, most of you on the council said you did not want to address or take action on this issue any further until you receive back a report from the PATH Foundation on the city's master trail plan. A preliminary report is due in the next sixty days with a final one sometime around summer. I just learned in an email from a council member that, he said the following. When the city arborist walked this, the Tilly Mill with city staff to evaluate the tree impact of the potential trail design, she identified several trees that were dead or diseased and posed a public safety hazard and made the recommendation that they be removed. He had a link there. The removal of these trees is for safety reasons and would happen regardless of any work or potential projects being considered by the city in the area. That's the end of the email. The link in the email says that someone at the city by either the arborist or someone else in public works or parks found, quote, "one large unhealthy pine leaning and bark damage." The Click It Fix a description only mentions one unhealthy pine. So why were a total of six trees taken down at the front entrance to Stevens Walk across from the MJC entrance and exit? Notice the entry did not say it was diseased or dangerous, as Mr. Lambert said in his email to the Tilly Mill residents. The point is, the city took out five other healthy trees, including a fourteen inch oak hardwood on the east side of Tilly Mill Road. But of course, nothing on the west side, the J C seaside. Neither the oak stump or other four pine stumps appear to be diseased, unhealthy, or dangerous. To me, it seems the city got the arborist to say one large pine was a risk and then use that as a reason to cut down five other healthy trees. It is disturbing and upsetting that all six trees are located in front of Stevens Walk after we were told nothing was going to happen for several months until the PATH Foundation made their report. The location of trees are at a choke, choke, choke point of the proposed alternate three route on the east side of Tilly Mill Path, TL007, RFP twenty-one dash oh six. Once again, I've asked the city, what is going on? What was the real reason the city cut down those five healthy trees? Nothing was communicated by the city to let us know this was happening. Supposedly, the trees were removed to protect us and others who used the sidewalks or roadway.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Healthy trees removed.
Joe Hirsch.
Hello. What's, what's the problem or what's the matter with this city? And it's a pretty broad question, but as you've probably already seen the news, the city was just supposedly just realized that you've been hiring a criminal to take care of our finances. How, how does that happen? I mean, you can all point fingers and say, well, it was a contractor originally hired or he came recommended to us. But the reality is, don't point fingers. It's you. Where, where does this buck stop in this city? Is it you, 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 or you? Where does the buck stop? Is it our city manager? Because if it is, he'll tell you to speak to Jennifer and Jennifer will say, oh, it's a contractor. Is it our city attorney? How, how do these mistakes happen? Even just the last person that spoke wants to know what's going on because there's, there's a lack of transparency. You know what happened. Someone knows what happened. But you're not telling the truth and we deserve to know the truth. How long is this? Wow. I don't even know where to phrase this because it's just so insane that the city can hire someone who's convicted by the Department of Justice. I mean, can anyone truthfully say, yeah, we have a real excuse or not without blaming someone? The city never takes fault or blame for anything. You always say, oh, we didn't know about it. Oh, it came from this. It came from that. I'd like to open records requests. Well, I already requested stuff earlier today, but unfortunately, his resume, his referral letters, all that stuff is not admissible or it's exempt from open records requests. But you can tell us, just you pointed privilege after, after this, after I speak, you could say, yes, this person was recommended by so and so. Or yes, this person hired him. I dare you to, I dare you to tell us the truth. If you don't, why not? Why won't you tell the citizens of Dunwoody the truth of who's incompetent in the city? I mean, obviously it's more than one person. Someone can't just get hired with a criminal record without anybody just hiring this person without anyone checking this person out, right? Or, or is it okay to have someone in charge of the city's finances as a huge convict? Is it okay to have someone responsible for the city's taxpayers' funds without you looking into this person? Apparently it is. I mean, I don't know how this happens. You do. You know who to point the finger at. It's yourselves. Who's going to take the fall for this? Who's going to be fired? Mayor, do you ever say anything's your, no, you defer to the city manager. I know. City manager says, speak to Jennifer. Jennifer says, speak to the contractor. That's the way this works. It's just, uh, what's the, some cliches, a boat without a rudder. A chicken with its head cut off. Someone put the turtle on top of the fence post. We know how it got there. Y'all did it. Who did it? Tell us the names. Tell us who's been fired over this. Yeah. I mean, why not?
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. If it's okay, Council, I'd like to take a moment of privilege, please. So the situation with the contractor is, or the, he is a contractor. It says a city employee, but he worked for a contractor. We just uncovered it on Friday, which was, you know, two days ago, not business days. We have to do an investigation to understand what happened. And when we do the investigation, we will then release the details of the investigation of how it happened. He was not in charge of finances. Jay, could you please give us an overview of what his position was?
The individual in question was the business license clerk for the city. They worked at the front reception window. When this was discovered by staff on Friday, he had already had some of his access cut off because he had not been in for the past day. It was completely and totally cut off. The city is in, has his equipment. We received all of that today. The city has also been in contact with this vendor throughout the day today. About maybe an hour ago, they have been in contact with their own HR department about the hiring process. They did a background check on the individual before they came on board with the city and it came clean. They are now reviewing that internally to see what mistakes were made at that time, and that's where it stands currently.
Thank you.
Mad Mayor, may I also just make a quick comment?
Yes.
I just want to address something else that was brought up in public, a comment regarding the trees. The statement was made that one helped, one diseased tree and five healthy trees were taken down. That's not factual. All of the trees removed were diseased. The picture was just one example that I provided for the person that reached out to me so they could see what I was talking about. I also provided a link to see Click Fix. And if you click the link, you'll see that there were multiple trees. Each tree was registered in See Click Fix as one incident. There are multiple entries on that. All of those trees were diseased as determined by the city arborist and posed a safety hazard to the public. So I just want to clarify that. There was nothing malicious there. There were dead trees that posed a safety hazard and they were moved to keep the public safe.
And so what you're saying, just so I understand, is that if you look and see Click Fix, you're going to see a listing for each tree as an individual.
Tree is listed individually. I believe Michael Smith entered those trees, the Public Works Director. And, and just, just for the record, the arborist was out there, I believe with the PATH Foundation, and I don't think Michael's here, but I don't know if Richard could comment on it. And the arborist went in part because of requests by the local neighbors to evaluate the trees that might be impacted. And during that evaluation, they, they discovered those dead trees.
Thank you. Mr. Vinicki.
Are you seeing the presentation? Nope. Can you see it now? Let's try this again. It was up before I walked up here. Give me one second, please. There it is in here. It's opening. There we go. End of the year retreat review. Shadow IT. Anyway, one of the things the council did at its retreat this past year that I applaud was we also did a six month review after the fact. We are now twelve months away from that retreat and what we'd like to do is a year end recap of all the action items that were, were tasked at that time and the results of them. One of the things we believe as staff and we applaud the city for doing is reviewing what it started to do to make sure where it stands. In some cases, some goals are met and in some cases others are not, but we want to keep updating ourselves regularly on this. Okay, uh, first off, minimize that. For going part of this, and some of it I'll go rather fast because we've all been there. We've heard about it. One of the things that happened first was there was a proposed operating millage increase. Now, one of the things the council did was the Budget Committee and the like started doing operational forecasting. And the council looked at that and addressed it and the, did so by raising the cap from two point seven four mils to three point oh four mils, which again, for a homeowner is actually one mil less because there's an exemption for all homesteaded properties. So even though the millage rate was raised by this council to the cap, the tax rate of any resident of Dunwoody, a homesteaded resident, is still the lowest tax rate in the county of DeKalb. There's no way to slice it other than that. Even though it's at the maximum allowed by charter, it is the lowest in the county. Second thing the city staff was taxed at was that the special tax district for parks and or police was examined. So we've gone back through how it would be created for the public's information. One of the things about it, if it's created in year two thousand and twenty-three, the first year the tax can be levied would be two thousand and twenty-four. As of right now, the city has not yet created that. We'll be reviewing it every year, possibly bringing it back to, if it was passed this year, it could not be eligible for a tax rate until next year. But all the rules are laid out. We've talked with the Tax Commissioner's Office and looked at that. Third thing on this slide was draft a calendar for a general obligation bond, and we started with that. And this is one of those things where sometimes the, the retreat was left with one task that pivoted as the year went on. And that's something that cities do. You react to the way things are going. But we started the general obligation bond calendar. We started with various community meetings. Kind of the deadline that was out there was a May call for election. So in other words, to be on November ballot, May was there. At that time, the council chose not to pursue it anymore. However, we have still been working on that and you're just going to see through some of these actions that in essence, this became what became the Capitol Review Committee of Citizens. So other meetings were developed to flush out the list from that. Fourth thing on this slide was an RFQ was tasked to the, the staff to make, put out on the street to distribute not-for-profit grant funds. I applaud the Finance Department here under leadership of Linda Neighbors and Richard Plato. They got that up and running without having to spend additional administrative funding on it. They did it internally with one of the most best checks and balances system I've ever seen. We have four people signing things. It's making some of us crazy on some days, but everybody gets to see it. To also give the council some other things on this, the grant funding that was done just at the end of the year, the second round of ARP funding, some of those checks have already been distributed. In fact, we've had one vendor, they get it in installations, already went through their first one. We're going to audit them this week and then look at the second funding form. So that's rolling along. Uh, next up, prepare an unfunded capital list. This was a direct task to us. And the one thing that happened out of it was essentially the Capital Review Committee. Councilmember Lambert chaired it, and I want to say it was very robust discussions. Homework was issued. Homework was completed. I want to say it's one of those cases where we as a city got true feedback of all the people that were on it. And I want to also applaud all of them individually for their participation and taking time out of their nights sitting here with whiteboards and writing out stuff and getting through it. They did defer some decisions concerning trails into this year when the PATH Foundation study is done, but they did it under the advisement of, oh, we can't do this until this is completed. It's a good way of doing the slow approach. Next up, one of the easiest things to do, finish the Waterford Restrooms. The bathroom and the waters have been hooked up. There's still some concrete work to be done and it should be done shortly. I'm not going to put an exact date on it, but the work is under progress. Next up, perform an organizational assessment of the police department. This is currently ongoing. City did an RFP process and contracted with a private firm to do an outside audit of it. They've been meeting with us. They're also having a community meeting. I want to say it's next week or the next week. They had done one originally, but with conflicts and election day, they had a second one. So that's going on. This should be completed within hopefully the first half of two thousand and twenty-three, might extend into the second half a little bit. Uh, next up, easy one on the thing, identify additional lighting locations and install lights to be funded by ARP, basically security thing. The Brook Run's Parks Multi-Lux Trail was completed and the remaining light should be completed in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. So that's one of those things where ARP was done what it should have done. One-time costs that were good, a good benefit, a quick fix to the community. Second thing coming out of the retreat was that we put additional license plate readers throughout the city. There were an additional twenty-seven installed, and this is one of the best tools that the Dunwoody PD has to help them. The number of times as y'all see through the reports that an LPR hit helped solve it is worth its weight. Um, one of the other things that was discussed during the retreat in the public safety and somewhat code area was reviewing the current areas of code concerning nuisances because it's one of those that is an ongoing thing. Dunwoody's a bait and it's ordinance currently tracks state law. However, we are continually looking at it to see what improvements we can make to it. And if we come to them, we'll bring them to the council at a later date. The fourth one is one of those tasks that I'd like to say, we started off well, but unfortunately have had to take two steps forward and one step back. We were able to contract with one of the local community service boards and providing a mental health provider to assist law enforcement in reporting and responding to scenes. I always like to say it this way. You can send a police officer to a domestic violence incident. He can calm everything down here. She can calm it down. And then the next day, the same thing could happen. This is to put somebody on there who can help with follow-up. It is a great thing. All of the cities around here are trying to do this. We engaged with a community service board that's was just came back to us and basically said, we can't staff this. It is another one of those things that in today's economy are hard positions to fill. And therefore we are trying to come up with a secondary alternative. We'll come back to you with something soon because we saw and Chief Grogan did the value in this person even for the short time they were here. Next up is addressing ambulances service with DeKalb County. This has been an ongoing discussion for quite a while with the county. We did receive a draft proposal from them for how would we add additional services to our, our part? It's a little bit pricier than we thought, so we're going to go back and engage with the county some more on it and still working on it. This is one of those items from the retreat that we knew might not be solved in the year. It has been ongoing. It again is another one of those situations where today's economy and the marketplace with EMS services comes into play. The next one is what I'd like to say, the big pivot that staff did, and I want to applaud all of the staff for pivoting like they did. They left the retreat with doing a small bike ped plan, east to west connector, and they thought they'd have it done in sixty, ninety days. And that evolved into this other thing and everything. I want to thank them for being able to pivot. It's what's grown into the path plan. Okay? The city started with a small one and it's evolved into a bigger one. That is part of the process of working with something like this, getting citizen input, getting council input and changing it as need be. We're looking into that and all of y'all have started to see path is on its way. Will be completed in early two thousand and twenty-three. Next up, have a corridor walkabout. I wanted to put this on the list because we scheduled it. We had to cancel it. We never scheduled it again. We're going to work on it, can getting calendars to mix. And also the day is harder because too hot, too humid, too cold, too windy, but we're going to schedule it sometime in conjunction with other things. Um, have discussions with perimeter center connects. That evolved into, and again, this is another evolution that evolved into a Safe Streets workout a month ago. Workshop, she'd be worked out something totally different, which I, is a concept I don't know how I'm going to visualize now. But one of the things it did is this showed that connections between us and our sister organizations around here, not just cities, but things like the CID mean a lot. And I want to say we had seventy-five people there. Okay, somebody knew the exact number and I knew he would know the exact number. We had ninety-eight. We had just shy of a hundred. Participation and interest in the community, this was gangbusters. And I'll, I'll say it that way. And a, and a lot of information was exchanged. I think it's a good beginning place, but again, this is something that evolved out of the retreat. The same with the Dunwoody Village Action Plan. The initial plan was shown in the council in October, two thousand and twenty-two. We've also had independent meetings, as you'll see with the second one with the Development Authority. We are concentrating on this, and this is part of the reason we wanted to keep a task list from the retreat. Because sometimes you just say, oh yeah, we'll get to it. Part of what we did in staff meetings was what some staff didn't quite like. Let's go through each one individually, but it kept us on task. Is this going to move instantly in two thousand and twenty-three? No, it's going to be an evolving process, but we're going to keep this thing moving. Next up, create Dunwoody, completed in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. Create Dunwoody funding has been approved and the new board is in place as y'all have started to see how that goes. One of the other things, one of the simplest requests, and I want to say it was the first completed out of the retreat was can our GIS have the, where art is in the city updated and it's updated in there? Uh, it's a minor one at the Vermac property. We were asked to look at installing sewer in there. We've reviewed it until a complete plan is done. We won't recommend completing in on septic. Review the naming of public parks. That process was reviewed and the first park named after that was named in August of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, staff was instructed to discuss with the county about having a park at the Chandler Water Treatment Facility. We've discussed that with them and due to security instances, they are not recommending it. We are always willing to dialogue with them, but at this point they've said no. Next up is adopt the Roberts Drive and Vermac Park Master Plans. Roberts Drive Plans was adopted in October. Vermac Plan will return soon for discussion. And last up on a few other things, revise the council standing rules and procedures. They're still being reviewed internally. Uh, revise the mission and vision statement. It was approved by council in October and review MARTA agreements. We have something on the agenda to discuss that later today. And with that, that's a very brief recap of last year's retreat and where we stand now.
Anybody have questions? Thank you for doing this. Appreciate it. Oh, nobody raised their hand. I didn't think anybody had questions.
Hey Jay, a couple of, the special tax district that the rolling, so if we were to take action, it would first would fall effect in October, two thousand and twenty-four is what you put on the slide deck, right?
If you approved it this year, yes.
So what is our deadline to get it through October twenty-four?
Last meeting of the year. It must legally exist on January first.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jay. And are you doing Eric's report? Okay. No, you don't have to do it from here. Thank you.
Going through next to the city manager's report, and I'll keep this a little bit brief, but there's some highlights I want to hit. For everybody that knows, the Seventh Annual Martin Luther King Day of Services upcoming and service projects will be held at Brook Run Park, the Nature Center and the Spruil Center. So that's ongoing or that's the beginning of it. In the public works area, Spaulding Drive at Shambly Dunwoody, the final landscaping plan for this first quarter at the Spaulding Storm Drain Upgrade, the contracting work, the contractor has been working on the drain structures in December and is now expected to complete it sometime in January. We're hoping January might go into February, but we're looking at that. Also, just to alert everyone in the public, the Georgetown Gateway with some of the work on there, there will be minor traffic delays in the Shambly Dunwoody Road area during the work day, some upcoming. Also just to alert everyone in the public, the Georgetown gateway with some of the work on there, there will be minor traffic delays in the Shambly Dunwoody road area during the work day, some upcoming. Um, keep going on to community development. We'd like to do some, uh, work that's been going on. High street is going up rapidly. Multiple buildings have started to be topped as some people can see and retail tenants. Including the mini golf provider have started the permitting process. So we saw things start to move. And as we all know on construction, it just starts ramping up. So, uh, good work over there. Uh, permitting, permitting documents have been resubmitted for the proposed liquor store that's occupying the old right aired space. So just wanted to alert everyone to that. Uh, the final site work is being completed for the new retail building and quick trip at the perimeter marketplace. The preliminary opening for the QT is scheduled for mid February. Again, that's private enterprise, but that's just to give you a date on it. Uh, keep moving on. I'd like to highlight two ribbon cuttings that a lot of everybody was at. Morty's meat and supply, hello ribbon cutting and 101 bagel, just literally next door, which is my side office now. So feel free to meet me over there. We know what the whole drill is. They know me by heart already. So it's already open. Uh, over in communications and marketing, the 2023 January version of the Dunwoody digest has been mailed out. And in the, uh, police department, one thing I'd like to add up is that the Dunwoody police department is going to do their annual participation in the polar plunge benefiting the athletes of Special Olympics. It's scheduled for February 25th and a donation link to support these efforts are going to be posted on their social media accounts as it gets closer to events. Um, and that's what I have right now. Any questions?
Um, uh, Tom, go ahead.
Um, not necessarily a question, but perhaps Jay, you can enhance what I'm going to say, or there might be a question at the end. Uh, when I was going through the city manager's report, uh, the finance section, um, and I, I looked at the finance, uh, the city finances through, um, November. Um, when I, when I was looking through the revenues, uh, the good, the, the good news portion. Um, was that, you know, our tax revenues were significantly higher than what was budgeted. Of course, you know, we have a tradition of budgeting conservatively, which I think is a smart thing to do. Uh, so that, that was good news, uh, that we, uh, got more there. Uh, when I, when I was looking there and there's a, um, other financing sources, I saw, I saw that we were roughly 2.1 million below what was budgeted. So that threw up a flag for me. So I started drilling deeper into that. Um, and what I found was what makes, there's a, a number of categories that make that up, but really the bulk of that comes from, um, the fact that we had 2.4 roughly $2.5 million budgeted out of reserves, out of city reserves, um, in 2022. And in fact, we have not tapped into that at all. Uh, so again, what initially threw up a red flag as a concern that we were down in revenues, actually. As I read it is a good thing because through November 30th, we have not needed to use city reserves, uh, to, but to run the city, uh, and uh, the fact that we are so far ahead leads me to believe, and I know that there's a lot of work to be done before the year ends, uh, financially. The calendar has ended, of course, um, and that you can't give me anything definitive, but um, I'm hopeful that what that means is although we budgeted, and I, I, I bring this up because I know there has been some concern in the community about a structural deficit, about how the city is running its finances. Um, but we do budget conservatively and as a result. We, as I read it, it does not appear that we will need to use any of the reserve that we budgeted for 2022. Am I speaking factually?
The answer to the question is yes, you are speaking factually to give some context to it. And for the public sake, in 2020, in 2021 and 2022, the city budgeted a deficit use of its general fund each year. We budgeted it, we planned for it, knowing that revenues would come in a little bit higher than we planned to, and knowing that expenditures always come in a hair less. In both 2020 and 2021, the city did not have to use its reserve, which is why we've grown above the six month level now. And now we're in a good comfort zone of seven. In 2022, we have the end of November and we have, I can't even call it preliminary December because we're on January 8th. But right now it looks as though there is an unlikely chance of us using any fund balance or any reserves. And if so, it would be a minimal amount. I can even say with some certainty, it looks more favorable to us actually generating a little bit more in the reserves for this year. So even though the city has budgeted to use, it does not seem definitely for 2020 and 2021, we did not use any. And it looks like for 2022, we're operating about the same way. Uh, thank you, Jay.
Uh, Rob, Catherine.
Yes, you now get to hear my enthusiasm, uh, for the Spalding Drive, um, storm water project. Now I'm getting a call from people who live in that neighborhood. If you're use ways, you can go two ways. You can go through Dunwoody Road, which is obvious and not too disruptive. But you can also go through this woodland forests where people are speeding. And I know I've been taken there that way too. So this project was meant to end December 9th. Yes, uh, that's fact. So now we're looking, we're going to be lucky if it's February 9th. My real question is what recourse we have for this contract? Is there nothing that we can gain from having it more than double in length of time and be severely disruptive? Not only the Dunwoody neighbors, but now the neighboring city neighbors. Contract, anything, anything.
If I can take it, let me get back to you on this specific one, but I do understand exactly what you're asking on it.
Thank you.
And also there should be a way, I think that Michael Smith can reach out to ways and ask them to take a disrupt, maybe a disruptive thing off.
We'll check on it.
Uh, anybody, anybody? Thank you very much. Next is the consent agenda. Um, there's two items on it and it's an action. Does anybody have any questions?
Move to approve.
Go ahead, question.
I was just going to make a point that I missed the, the, uh, meeting of December 13th. I was not there, so I will not be.
Okay.
I will vote to approve, but I will not, I'm just making.
Right, I understand. Sharon, you have that? Okay. Uh, any, we, well, we have now a motion moved to approve by Tom, but I need a second. Second by Rob, any discussion? Go ahead.
So just for clarification, uh, as well, so the meeting minutes are posted, but do we want to provide a little bit more about the legislative agenda? Just kind of, um, you know, there's in writing what's here in the minutes, but what's the big takeaways that we can kind of share that we've asked our, our state, especially at the state legislature? Uh, to, to action on. Do we feel?
We'll publish, how about we publish it in two weeks?
Okay.
We publish it in two weeks.
Okay, great. So yeah, we had started with this meeting where we had a proposed agenda. We had a, a nice, very detailed that went on over what hour and a half long meeting, something like that.
Right with our, yeah. So we met with our legislative delegation and representatives from our federal elected officials to go over our priorities, which mostly relate to keeping the powers that cities have intact. And, um, other things, but we will publish it in two weeks. All right. Anybody else seeing none? I call the question. All in favor say, oh, go ahead.
Is that a, are we then pulling the second item off the approval? Are we publishing it twice?
Wait.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, we'll publish, wait, hold on, sorry. We, so we normally adopt a legislative agenda, but it turns out maybe we didn't have to adopt it, but we'll bring back and include a more extensive.
Um, so we're going to approve the minutes in front of us for
Yes.
Now, we're going to come back and do something else in two weeks.
Just publish it, I think not.
Publish the summary for the public.
A little bit more information. Tailed summary of the public.
I just want to make sure.
That's fine. Yeah, that's what we're going to do. Publish. And we've had some change, like on the school zone cameras. So we can talk about that in two weeks. Um, all right. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Sharon. And I think you have to read the next one.
The next item on the agenda is a first read of ordinance to amend chapter 20 signs of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinance says. Allegra.
Thanks. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Allegra Denoyar. I'm the sign planner. So signs are really complex. There's a lot of free speech issues with them, um, which is one of the reasons why all of our updates go through really extensive reviews. So the current code was adopted in October, 2021, after a year long extensive review. That included staff review, a steering committee of stakeholders in the area, legal experts, planning commission and city council and significant public comment and discussion. The intent behind that was always to have an update after a year. And so staff is now proposing an update based on a year long tracking of outcomes and impacts in order to simplify the code. Fix issues and increase its usability. Uh, proposed changes have been reviewed by both the city attorney and an outside sign law specialist. So the code is organized by districts. So there's the residential district, office district, commercial, industrial, perimeter center and quasi-public institutional. It's a menu board approach. So each property can pick several types of signs from a range of choices, both permanent and limited duration. And each sign type has specific requirements for size, lighting, location and materials. We took this to planning commission on December 13th, and they recommended two additional changes. The addition of language about ADA access on sidewalks. And the addition of sandwich board sign regulations to the CR1, C2 and M districts. Both these changes have been incorporated by staff. They are included in the list of changes in the staff memo. And the commission recommended approval of the amendment four to zero. So we have a list of 27 changes. The first one through 13 are listed here. 14 through 27 are here, and I'm available to go over any of them in depth if there are any questions about them. One of the major changes that we're proposing is combining two districts together. So functionally, the standards for office districts and commercial and industrial districts are almost identical. And so combining them will simplify and clarify the code. The other major change that we're proposing is to expand upon the existing master sign plan process. We're seeing a need for flexibility to accommodate larger projects like the State Farm count complex and high street. Um, we're seeing a need to allow certain specific requests from the code to allow for creativity and unusual circumstances. Um, and so there's an existing section. We want to expand upon that and clarify the guidance for developers. Uh, we're planning on standardizing the process with our other administrative and zoning procedures. So same public notice requirements, same organizational procedures, et cetera. So the master sign plan process would have two avenues. The first one would be an administrative master sign plan process that would be decided by the community development director within 30 days, like our other administrative processes. So that would be for business owners who wanted to exceed the maximum area and or height for individual signs. And or change the location of signs, change the design of signs or use different materials for signs. The major master sign plan process would be reviewed by planning commission and mayor and city council. Um, in a period of several months, similar to our rezoning process. And that would be any of the four changes from the administrative process plus exceeding the maximum number of sign types, exceeding the maximum count for each sign type. And or exceeding the maximum total sign area allowed. So we're proposing this change because we're seeing that the larger complexes are burdened by the sign code just because of their size. Some of them have unusual circumstances. For example, the State Farm building, um, faces mul- has multiple sides. So it's not really like an easy four sided building, like the typical, um, wall signs that we get. And then they had an issue where the way our current wall sign section is written, you can either have a wall sign that's pretty close down to the street designed to be seen by pedestrians. Or at the top of any, um, really tall skyscrapers, but their building is stepped down. So they were wanting to put this sign here. Um, which was too, too short for the really tall sign and too tall for the really short sign. Um, and they were unable to do that because of the way the current code is written. We're also anticipating some issues with high street. And the problems there are that the two orange buildings that are right next to the building that says number 10, that's in blue. Those buildings technically don't face a street. They face a, a private street or they face a green. And so based on that, they would either be allowed no wall signs or just, um, one wall sign. Um, other changes are mostly standardizing and clarifying sections throughout the code, correcting oversights by adding more information and definitions and some other really minor policy changes just based on needs that we've seen. And one of those is some way finding sign issues currently in a fair amount of the, uh, zoning districts. Wayfinding signs are limited to curb cuts. As you can see here with both Dunwoody Baptist Church on the right and Marcus Jewish Community Center on the left. If either of these properties were to have wayfinding signage just limited to curb cuts. Um, it would restrict them to not be able to have any wayfinding signs internally to the complex. And what we're hearing from people is that they want to have for the larger complexes, they want to have wayfinding signs internally to be able to point people in the direction of the various purposes of the buildings. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Tom.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you Allegra. And let me just say thank you and everyone involved with this. I, first of all, I think it's, it's great practice to especially if something of this size and the significance and the extent that we changed our code to revisit that in a year, because there's always unintended consequences or things that weren't considered or things that we learn now, people are applying for things and oh my gosh, we didn't consider that. So I think it's good practice to do this. Um, so thank you in advance for that. Um, I have two questions of things that kind of, uh, caught my attention. The first is, uh, the change for vacant space, uh, changing it from the 30% requirement to basically unlimited. Um, I'll ask a question in a second, but if, if that's being done so that some sort of attractive public artist put in a window to, to mask the fact that it's vacant. That's nice, but what I envision is the entire window saying, you know, for rent and, and being an eyesore and really not a good thing for the community. So what was the, I, I guess the, the motivation or the, uh, the idea behind changing it for vacant space?
Yeah, the intent behind it was the, the first point that you made in terms of public art primarily.
But as I read the red line, it, it, and I might be reading it wrong. I don't see it limited to that. Is there a way that we can change that or, or restrict? Cause I, what I don't want is for an entire window to become basically a billboard and unlimited, um, signage in the window. Is there a way for us to further clarify that?
Yeah, we can definitely review that and see what our options are.
Yeah. Cause again, if we're doing it and making a vacant space look more attractive, that's a benefit. But if, if the property owner has the ability to do whatever they want in that window, that could lead to unintended consequences. So, um, and then I just want to clarify the, uh, the major master sign plan. Those are the, the plans that would come before the council. Um, first of all, as I read it, it would have, it would only be available to projects or properties over seven acres.
Correct. So be available to existing common developments over seven acres or new common developments that are coming before us.
But there's no size restriction on the, the new ones coming to us?
No.
So any, any new business coming in would have the.
So it would be new common developments.
Okay.
Typically those are either coming before us in the sense of a rezoning, you know, like perimeter marketplace. Or it's parcels that are sharing infrastructure, parking spaces, driveways, stuff like that.
Okay. Um, and that's going to be, uh, so existing properties, like for example, if they're doing a facelift and they wanted to or, or the, the example used with State Farm, um, that would be when it would come before us, correct? Um, and, and, and as I was reading it again, it goes through a, an application process similar to a rezoning. So they'd have to do a lot of homework and application before it ever, and then it goes to planning commission before it ever got to. Is there any? I, 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 I am in favor of this because I like having the flexibility, uh, to, to make sometimes common sense decisions that might not, the code might not allow. Um, will we have any restrictions or guidelines so that when we're making a decision up here? Uh, my concern is consistency that as council members change or the seasons change, uh, that we, we're not approving. What, and again, I guess that's with any issue that comes before the council, but I'm just, I just have concerns that we're not setting ourselves up perhaps legally. For, while you allowed that development to do something with their signs, why can't we, I, I, I just want, I guess a little more clarification on that.
So we have four, um, criteria that are in, um, let me see what section is it? So it's section 20 dash 133. Um, and so the review, the following review and approval criteria are whether the proposed signs are visually consistent within development based on at least three of the following factors, color scheme, lettering. are visually consistent within development based on at least three of the following factors: color scheme, lettering scheme, uh, lettering style, excuse me, materials and location of signs to be posted on buildings. Number two, whether the proposed signs are of a consistent size and scale to existing signs in the immediate area. Number three, whether the proposed signs are reasonably scaled to the size of the subject structure and or premises. And number four, whether unusual circumstances exist that warrant the granting of this major master sign plan.
Okay.
Those would be the criteria that, that you all in planning commission.
So the, the State Farm example would be the perfect example, like everything fit the criteria. It was just the wrong height. And, but we could make, again, a common sense decision to say, well, yeah, that, but that makes sense. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Anything wrong?
Thank you for, for updating and revising based on experience and feedback. And I appreciate the briefing that I got last week.
Hey, thank you. Well, good. Well, there's a lot in there. So let me start with prohibited signs. Dilapidated signs are prohibited, but dilapidated is not defined. Is it meant to be subjective?
Uh, we can look into that. We can look into adding a definition.
Okay.
Dilapidated.
Okay. Also under prohibited signs is a roof sign on a building under forty feet. Does that mean a house? Are we talking about house roof signs? Because now I'm thinking about political signs putting on roofs. Is that part of this?
So roof signs are not allowed in residential districts, period.
So flat to the roof would be disallowed?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then yard signs, I'm, because I am focused on the residential. So yard signs five per max. But it doesn't have a duration under that section. So under the wall banner, it does have a duration, but does yard signs have that two month?
No, there's no
Forever. Yard signs forever. Okay. Uh, then in sign standards, we talk about painted murals. And we're talking about that more on this council. We talk about that for parking decks, but this seems to say it's limited to one eighth of the facade.
Correct. So there's a difference between the painted murals that are done through the sign code and any murals that are done through the public art ordinance. So, yeah, so
That's the, the out for that one. Okay. And, oh, and then something I didn't, just hit me reading about all these signs. What if we projected a sign onto a wall? Is that covered in here?
What do you mean by projected?
I'm talking about a light show sign if somebody wanted that to be, because then it could be animated, it could be rolling, it could be anything. Is that a sign type that we talk about?
Um, we don't have that defined as a sign type.
Is that a, is that a thing you want to talk about? I don't know. I am just, I'm just bringing that up. Okay. Oh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, a lot of my questions have been answered. And I just thank you. And I hadn't, I had a question on the criteria as well. And so I scrolled down to section one thirty-three and yes, thank you. That was very clear and I appreciate that.
Thank you Allegra and team. Paul, you, you had a session with me as well, walking through all this stuff. It's a lot of, lot of low level, low level detail work. You know, you've had it reviewed from legal, right? That's outside of above and beyond legal specialists that specialize in signs. And you've also looked at other cities and other folks as well as how they do things. I'm always trying to see, okay, how do things work? And like you say, this is a dynamic thing. It's based on feedback and we're doing more housekeeping. So thank you for your due diligence.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, thank you for the proposed changes and all the work. My questions really are twofold. I won't try to go through. I want to make sure there's no unintended consequences, especially as related to billboards and LED signs. There's a section in there on non-conforming signs and changes. You didn't really mention the non, what happens with non-conforming or update us on that section. And then the master sign plan. Are billboards allowed? Are LED signs allowed? I didn't see that in there. I want to make sure there's no place for unintended consequences when it comes to billboards, LED signs.
Yeah. So billboards are really tricky legally, because it's really challenging for us to just say like, no billboards allowed. So we sort of have to legislate them without actually let, saying that we're legislating them. So the non-conforming section, so non-conforming signs are currently, non-conforming ground signs, which is what any billboards would be considered, currently are able to, to do a panel swap. So they can, so they can't replace the entire sign as is, but they're just able to swap out a panel. And that's not something we're updating or changing. That's, we're, we're leaving that in place. And we're adding in a section that would allow for non-conforming wall signs to be swapped out, but they would need to be conforming illumination wise. So they would need to conform to our current illumination standards. And in terms of the major master sun, master sign process, and I all signs would need to be compliant in terms of illumination. So that would take care of the LED aspect. And then I don't think we foresee any developments coming forward proposing billboards, but they would just go through the process. And that's where you would apply those criteria in terms of does the size make sense given size, even the sizes of signs in the neighborhood and all of the other criteria.
All right. Either if I can get some update regarding the master plan and billboards, or I'll have a conversation with staff. I'm interested in that topic to make sure that we're covered from that perspective.
Okay, we'll look into that further. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I am thrilled with the two avenues for the master sign plan. I've long been concerned that we aren't looking at sites. Like we, you know, the new Ashford Lane wanted to put like a poll that said Ashford Lane on the hobnob and the back of hobnob, that's where they, you know, cut it off and they can't because they have their sign limit. But it, it's not like a sign. It's not like we're adding to the clutter of a public street, which is what we want to be concerned about. Like that should be our first priority is what is on the public street. This is an internal. And I lie, and if, you know, if a future council decides they want different rules, they can change the rules. It's not unchangeable, but I like the idea, given especially the size of the developments that are coming. There's some fluidity at State Farm right now. So I like internal being decided in the context of the space. So I appreciate that. And we will see this again. Is this two votes? Is this two, two reads? Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Anybody else? If you'll just get back to everybody on their questions, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Smith. Football game. I know he doesn't. Right? So did I, actually. Though I'm wearing my red and black like a good Georgia elected official.
We could stay here all night.
Right. I don't remember. You know, it was the first time last year. Now it's like old hat, right? Georgia's in there. Whatever, right?
Okay. Everybody see that on the screen? All right. So the council last discussed this project on Shamley Dumity Road in Dumity Village last March. And at that time, the council generally supported the proposed bicycle and pedestrian improvements along the corridor, but there were some concerns about the whether enough was being done to improve the traffic in the village. And so we're coming back with some additional. Screen went blank there. There we go. Just to refresh everybody's memory about what the concept was, we were proposing race cycle tracks, wider sidewalks, street trees on both sides of the road between Womack and Roberts Drive. The plan was to generally maintain the existing travel lanes north of Mount Vernon, where there's the center turn lane that, and where we don't really need a center turn lane. We were proposing some landscape medians. At Mount, at the Mount Vernon intersection, this is looking north. We were proposing to remove one of the southbound through lanes and can basically take that space to make an additional northbound left turn lane from Shamley Dumity onto Mount Vernon to improve traffic flow at that intersection.
That's what, you know, I get. So what we're looking at is Shamley Dumity or Mount Vernon?
We're looking, you're looking at looking north.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Maybe from near the library.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the tall building is aspirational.
Right, this is aspirational. So that's, that was my challenge.
Okay. So, and then about the traffic reviewing that again, there's really two factors that are affecting the, the traffic congestion in the village. One is that on most weekdays, the number of cars on Shamley Dumity represented by the orange line here by, by hour of the day is around or above the limit that a two-lane road where it can free flow on a two-lane road, which is the blue line. So, you know, the actual traffic is right around that threshold where two lanes just really doesn't work. Or, or leads to congestion. I mean, it just slows traffic down. So the only way to really change this would be to add travel lanes on Shamley Dumity. The other contributing factor is the congestion around the Mount Vernon intersection. You've got two major roadways there with a lot of traffic crossing each other. And so this, that's the intersection in the village that really experiences the most congestion, which can sometimes spill back into some of the other intersections. So that, that's kind of the problem we're dealing with. And we looked before and we've gone back and taken another look at some options for the Mount Vernon intersection. What's shown here is what's in the concept plan, which is that second northbound left from Shamley Dumity on the Mount Vernon. That's on the, the left side of, of your screen there. And then the other directions really not changing any lane configurations, just adding the, the cycle track and, and sidewalk. And this, this improvement could be done within the existing right away, that additional left turn lane. So it doesn't really cost a lot as far as property or, or cost. And it would add, it would improve and be about a fifteen percent improvement in the AM peak hour and the overall efficiency of the intersection. The other things we looked at, this, this was adding turn lanes. You know, another, anybody that drives through the village in the afternoon, late afternoon knows that the left turn lane from Mount Vernon to Shamley Dumity going north. If you're heading from here towards the village, you're turning left on the Shamley Dumity. That backs up and often spills out of that turn lane. So we looked at adding a second left turn lane there. The, the challenge with that is that to, to have two left turn lanes there, you need two lanes on Shamley Dumity going north to receive that traffic. And there's not much room there between the farmhouse and the Dunkin' Donuts, the triangle at Nandina. So to avoid impacting the farmhouse, you would have to widen towards the other side of the road and, and you would end up probably having to, have to acquire that entire triangle. There would be some remnant property left over when you're done, but to build the project, you would need to acquire those commercial properties with that improvement. And as, and we'll talk in a little bit about what, you know, that's the impact shown here, but what's the benefit? The, the other option that was seriously considered was a roundabout. It would have to be a two-lane roundabout. It would operate better than the, the, the turn lanes that I just showed. And it would not require the second lane going north on Shamley Dumity. However, it takes up more space. And so in addition to acquiring the triangle, you most likely would have to acquire the gas station on the other side of the street too. So just expensive commercial property to try to fit that in there. So I wanted to try to give a visual of when we talk about the improvement in traffic flow or the delay. This is show, these graphics here are showing the, the red and blue lines are how far the traffic backs up, red in the morning, blue in the afternoon. The, on the left is basically conditions as they are today. At the upper, you're pointing up is the blue line. That's the blue, that's the traffic backup, the left turn lane we were talking about going from Mount Vernon to Shamley Dumity. You can see it, it backs up sometimes past the church entrance. And we're talking peak AM and peak PM hours. You've got some backups in the other directions too, but you know, fortunately, you know, they most, in most cases, they don't back up to the next signalized intersection, which is when you start to get gridlock. So it can lead to some backups, but it's not, you know, total, total gridlock today. Projecting out to twenty forty-four, twenty, twenty years from when this would possibly be built. You can see that, that if we do nothing, that that same left turn lane from Mount Vernon to Shamley Dumity backs up a little further. You start to have some spillover into the Nandina Shamley Dumity intersection there on the right side of the screen. And you have a little more backup in the other directions, but still not spilling into other intersections. So not, not catastrophic. Just a little bit longer lines. And then if we look at, again, on the left is, is still, if you do nothing, just to compare to the roundabout. And this, this is trying to explain why the roundabout overall works better, but it still is not without problems even from a traffic flow standpoint. The, that, the north or the the eastbound Mount Vernon to Shamley Dumity, the blue line does get a little shorter, but it's still pretty long. The other directions, it's harder to see on the roundabout, but the red and blue lines around the roundabout are getting shorter. Except for northbound on Shamley Dumity, like in front of the library in the after, in the afternoon and in the morning going south, like coming from Roberts. Those are still pretty long queues. They don't really change very much. So over, the overall intersection operates better. There's less overall delay, but you still have some approaches that are going to have some pretty, pretty long queues at the heaviest traffic times of day. So kind of the overall conclusion for the designers and and staff is that, yes, we could make some additional traffic improvements beyond what has already been included in the concept plan. But they would be small gains with large costs associated with them. And one of the reasons we're bringing this back right now is, you know, recently, we were fortunate enough, Atlanta Regional Commission awarded it six million dollars to this project. So soon we'll be entering into an agreement with DOT and we'll start to be on a timeline for, for actually making these improvements. But the, the costs, the current cost estimate for the whole corridor is still more than what we have money for allocated right now. So we're either, we're going to already probably have to look at building it in phases or segments. And so when you start talking about adding, you know, if you wanted to do major improvements at the Mount Vernon intersection. And the other thing to kind of talk about here is the utilities, because I know everyone would really love to bury the utilities, but you know, eight million dollars would, for utility, that's the estimate we have roughly eight million.
To, okay.
To bury the utilities.
I just wanted you to repeat it.
Ru- rough estimate that, you know, that increases the cost of the project by fifty percent. So I guess where we are is we're, we're going to be needing to make, we need to make some decisions about what the project is to start moving forward with the federal money. And really where we are is if, if the city wants to make major improvements at Mount, or ma- major changes at Mount Vernon and do things like bury utilities, we're really going to have to have, identify some additional funding sources. So I'll, I'll open up questions at that point or comments.
Since I run the meeting, I just want to ask a quick question. So sometimes when I sit in meetings about transportation, they define the improvements in time per commuter. they define the improvements in time per commuter. So do, do we have? Do it? So the current, do we have any of that kind of data?
We, we do. It's, it's more, it's not more, it's not per commuter, although we could get that, but, um, like if you look at the bottom of the,
I see it.
The delay, that's the, uh,
That's in seconds, right?
Right.
So it's the peak, this is the current situation, right? Or is this the, this is the current plan?
This would be, um, this would be with adding the left turn lanes in the future, you know, 20 years out.
So do you have the current? Like without changing?
I don't have it here, but I do have that.
Just curious, because one of the things I've learned over the last X number of years is that like even the managed lanes, you know, you're talking a minute and a half savings or something per commuter, per per commute. And that what they do is they add it all together, right? So it's going to save a bazillion hours a day, but for each individual commuter, they're not going to really feel it.
Right. Yeah. And, and one of the reasons I wanted to present it this way is that, you know, the roundabout, if you just look at the overall delay, it's going to be less, a good bit less than the other, but the, you're still going to have some directions that back up a lot.
Right. Okay. All right. Now we'll start at Johnson.
Thank you, Michael. I have a few questions. Um, this is really a beautification and pedestrian safety project. Would you agree to that?
I mean, I think that's the vision that came out of the Dunwoody master plan that we were trying to do here. Yes.
I had questions regarding the efficiency. If you could go, um, let's at five o'clock PM, you showed the, uh, the graph and at five o'clock, basically gridlock. There you go. So at five o'clock, we're in traffic, we're sitting in traffic. Can you, uh, can you go now go to the mass, the, uh, overall plan, the, the pretty picture, which shows the whole intersection with the in and out? Um, yeah, that. So you got the cycle tracks there and the sidewalks. The, the, the cycle tracks now remind me, they are basically segmented off bike paths, correct? They're sort of blocked off.
They're, they're rec- sidewalk level, you know, three to five feet off the edge of the curb.
Okay. And this is where my concerns start to come. Can you show me that photo? I think it's back a slide or two of the beauty there, right there. Stop that back, back that, that right there.
The one I didn't know where we were.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the beautiful Dunkin' Donuts that I didn't know that's what it was. Um, take a look at that. This is where my concerns come in. For many years we have approved bike pass and the reason we've approved bike pass and we're, many of us were in favor of it was because when this intersection is gridlocked, this is now 5:00 PM, you're looking at 5:00 PM, you're looking at gridlock. Um, typically our bike lanes would allow us to move everybody over three feet to the right, three feet to the right and would allow paths down the middle of the street for emergency vehicles. When I look at these paths now with the cycle tracks and the, the curbing, um, granted, this little location has a little room there, the next was sort of half lane, but I'm concerned that by putting the cycle tracks in and not having the ability for cars to move over, are we negatively impacting our emergency response times? In the case of emergency services trying to roll through the city of Dunwoody at rush hour?
Uh, I, not on, I don't think you will be on this segment of Shandly Dunwoody because there's very few places, the only places that would maybe be a concern is if we put in some of the landscape median. But where you don't have the median, you're going to have a center turn lane or near the intersections, you are going, you'll have some turn lane. So in most, most places throughout the corridor, the pavement's going to be wider than just one lane in each direction.
Okay. Again, my concern is 5:00 PM gridlock, nobody able to move to the right. And if there was a, you know, with that yellow line and that, if that was, there was a buffer area there. If we locked ourselves in, we'd be locking ourselves into that gridlock for emergency services, having little places to move. That's, that's my main concern, looking at that besides the price and the beauty. You know, you know, I just want to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for the buck. I was hoping for some incremental, um, efficiencies as well. Um, but that's my concern at what I'm seeing there. So I'll let the others, you know, weigh in, but that's my concerns. Thank you.
Joe.
Well, I was rooting for Michigan tonight, so TCU fans, I'm sorry. So I can talk a little bit longer because I'm sure Georgia would have beat Michigan this year anyway. Um, I, I just, I have some different notes as well here. And you're right, it does say, you know, when the, in the press releases for this grant, Dunwoody to continue enhancing walkability with transportation grant or improving pedestrians and so on. So I get that, but, um, but, let, let me see where I want to start. When we do traffic studies, motor vehicles, how can we be aspirationally tasked with finding the origins and destinations of those people and those vehicles? I think it would be really eye opening to see how we could gather that. We got to think outside the box here because if I see people, they say 50% or more of trips in the US are two miles or less. But if we know right now, where are they going? Are they doing to up to Roberts again in 400 North? And do they work at perimeter? And then maybe when the collector distributor lanes are built on 400, two years from now, maybe they're going over there instead. That might help us potentially. Um, the, the origin and destinations of seeing where, if, if they're, if most of those people are just living around here. And I'm not saying everybody will be out on a, on a non-motorized or even a golf cart. But you know, think about, I'd like to find out where, where are those people coming from and where are they going to that are priming in here. Um, especially given the 400 possibilities, if they're going up north on 400 on Roberts. Cause you know, if I, you go north on Roberts, it gets backed up there as well. Um, I'm a huge fan of roundabouts. I'd love to see that. I'd like to figure out how we can look at the flow all the way along. Cause if you think about that afternoon where people are going from Mount Vernon, they're taking a left on Shandly Dunwoody. And there's, there's, there's a couple of clogs, even if you did two left turn lanes now, they're still going to get stuck in the village because that next light, they get stuck at the la- next light that you're going right into Fresh Market and everything else, right? And then they're going to wait the next slide, then they got another one, uh, uh, Shandly Dunwoody, then you finally they're clear and then they, they slow down to get to Spaulding, right? So there's this huge accordion effect. So I, I don't know if a short-term signal timing, uh, do we, let me ask you this one. Do we change the signal timing? Uh, is, is that part of the, the, the PCID area all the way up through north of?
We, we do change the signal timing. Um, uh, but the Mount Vernon intersection is really what drives the whole thing. Uh, you know, if that, if that's not flowing well, I mean, everything's kind of timed off of that. And if it's not flowing well, it's going to affect everything else. If it is flowing well, those other signals aren't really going to, you know, especially the ones that like the shopping center entrances aren't really going to, going to have much effect on the overall traffic flow.
All right. So just miscellaneous conversation. So I, I know this is kind of leaning toward level of service efficiency and throughput, um, but I'm also a proponent of looking at safety. And, and making sure that it's calm speeds, that pedestrians can cross safety. I know that we've got those concepts looking in that, uh, well, but origin and destinations would be huge to see that eye, eye opening. Oh, everybody lives up in Forsyth County that's going north on, on, I, I don't know if those, that did not. Um, when we just look at the, um, the project itself that's sitting on, on, if we're just going to have a conversation, um, when we move forward of looking at the project, I think this is a multi-generational transformational project that we have this great opportunity and I would love to say, uh, look out of the box for funding mechanisms to bury the utilities. Whether it could be potentially ba- based on adding it to a potential bond for us and citizens, uh, we may have some, some freed up capital funds from sale of properties that we may have been able to put onto it. Um, you know, Tom, Thomas Edison, I found this quote, when you have exhausted all possibilities, remember this, you haven't. So I'm going to just totally support any and all options of searching for ways of putting the underground utilities in and backing in a timeline when we can, we can marry that up, um, based on funding mechanisms. Um, I'd also like to consider buying and closing any curb cuts all throughout that village along Shandly Dunwoody. How many curb cuts can we buy and close a- as, as a preparation for this project to consolidate that and help traffic of get people up? Like, um, if you go over to Nova Cachina and then, uh, Publix there, that's really nasty out there where you have this extra curb cut uh, going out in Shandly Dunwoody instead of getting everybody going over to the light, uh, at the, and inner signal line. So I'd like to look at that, um, what it takes to buy and close some curb cuts. And maybe we can help traffic that way of bringing over people to the lights and keeping them moving and, and many roundabouts or whatever. Um, yeah. Um, master plan. But way back in the day, I, I think that aspirational master plan Dunwoody Village does show a grid eventually that imagine on Mount Vernon, there should be another access point coming through the village. So where is origins and destinations? If I got to go on Mount Vernon to a left on Shandly Dunwoody, just because I'm going to the daycare or I want to go to, you know, if we built the grid out, that could also alleviate if we're going out to 2024, you want to model, if we ever create a grid out there, I think that would help if we did that as well. And, uh, da, 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 da. So, um, you know, Elphoretta, it's not off apples and oranges, but you know, they have, they already had kind of a sort of a grid. They had Haynes Bridge downtown Elphoretta and that was a G dot. And then they've got highway nine, you know, so they already have. It's too bad. We don't have a real true grid that we could push people on and, and, and help flow that because they did reduce the traffic on Haynes Bridge. They put a roundabout in there and it made things efficient. So, um, anyway, I appreciate having the conversation. I, I love the idea of just having interactive conversations as well. When we get to it to go to the next steps of saying what we really want to achieve or putting some dates on some activities, but thanks, Michael.
Stacy.
Um, just two quick questions. I think somewhere I, I heard you mentioned that with, I think it was the alternative one that it increased traffic flow by 15%. Am I making that up?
It, it, yeah, improves by 15% in the morning peak.
In the morning peak. So what does 15% mean to the average car?
Right.
Um,
That was kind of my question.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. Some people maybe would notice it. Some people may not, you know, it's, um, because it fluctuates from day to day too. I think it, it means that there'll be less times where you might be trying to get through the light and you have to wait for the next cycle.
Um, and then you talked about, you know, we're kind of looking at these because we do have a timeline with the grant money from ARC. Um, what is our timeline? And then if, I mean, but will I still be alive when this gets?
Yeah. I mean, well, I, I don't want to put a, you know, we're going to have it built by this date right now, but it, with $6 million coming in and getting it programmed with ARC, it's all of a sudden, you know, it's a, it's a within five-year project versus, you know, sometime in the future. As far as within five years to go to construction. Yeah.
Right. Catherine, anything? Rob, anything?
Um, yeah. Uh, so I'll, I think I'll echo, um, Joe. And then from just an aesthetics standpoint, it sure would be great to figure out a way to get the utilities buried. That $8 million price tag kind of makes me willing to give up on that idea, but I'd still like to, to at least banter about a little bit. Um, overall, I like, uh, I like the concept. Um, I, I think we all agree that the roundabout's probably too much. Um, you've got listed properties and commercial businesses that would just, that would make it cost prohibitive. Um, but I do like the idea of doing some sort of traffic intersection improvement, even if just adding a turn lane, something to kind of help traffic get through that area better. Um, one last thought I had, and I, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be part of this concept, but maybe something to keep in mind is place holder locations for public art for, um, some gateway pieces or art or signage, something as you're coming to the village that kind of catches your eye. Just when, when we're laying this out and designing it in the future, could be put something right there if we keep the spot open. That, that kind, that, you know, there's just another thought that kind of comes to mind. Um, and that's all I've got for now.
Tom.
Oh yeah. Uh, thank you, Michael. Um, I'm excited about this. I think a lot of people are excited about this. This is the potential to be a transformational project for the village. Everyone, we know how much the community wants that to become a special place for the city. So I think this, this is a big step in that direction. And with that thought in mind, um, it's going to be a big, large scale project regardless of what we do. Um, which means we've really only got one shot to get it right. And I just want to make sure that we fully vetted all of our options. Uh, and I'm not saying that we haven't, uh, but, um, that we've fully considered everything because once, once, once we go and do this, I mean, that's what we're going to live with, certainly for the rest of our lives and probably our children's lives as well. So, um, with that thought in mind, and I want to make crystal clear, I'm not advocating for these things. I'm just asking the questions. So, so first thing, I would absolutely want to save the tree in front of the farmhouse. However, I also know that uh, just a year or two ago, there was another tree there and it fell. Has that been evaluated by Arbor's? Is that tree healthy? Are we doing a lot of reconfiguring to save a tree that is in good health? I just want to make sure we've evaluated that.
Uh, we haven't evaluated that tree. Um, so it's off the right of way, but we did meet with the, uh, DPT representatives and their feedback, you know, to take into consideration is they were concerned about the tree, but they really don't want anything coming in their direction anymore than it already does. It like tree or no tree.
They're worried about encroachment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we're making informed decisions. Like we're doing all this work to save a tree that is going to die in three years anyway. So, okay. Could you switch slides to the one that shows the, uh, the roundabout and not that one? I think the other one that had the split screen because it showed a little bit further out distance. Have we basically this plant, the, from what you told us, the roundabout is the only intersection improvement that has any significant uh, value as far as traffic movement through that intersection. Um, obviously the way this is, we're taking a lot of commercial property. Um, I know there was geometry and other things involved, uh, but that Nandina triangle, there's a lot of space there, uh, and there's, there's two commercial properties. And again, I know that would be expensive to acquire. However, the current plan basically keeps a roundabout at the center of the existing intersection. If that, is it possible for that intersection to be shifted completely into that tri- that, where I should say the roundabout so that you're only affecting those two properties? Uh, and again, and this also shows Nandina lane keeping open. If we're able to shift that back, I, there's, I don't think there's a reason to keep Nandina there and just have a full roundabout because as for Dunwoody already cut, kind of goes straight into where Nandina triangle is anyway. I don't think it would be an issue for Shandly Dunwoody. It might be for Mount Vernon going westbound. Um, but I think all of the other areas could accommodate. I'm just, has that been considered? Like switching it into basically into the center of that triangle instead of where it is now? That where we're only impacting two commercial properties, but still getting the benefits of the roundabout.
Yeah, they did look, they did look at that. They, you know, they looked at where's the best place to put this roundabout? And no matter where you shift it to, to get everything to it, you're, you're going to end, end up impacting probably two or three properties. So if you, if you push it up into the tri- well, if you push it up into the triangle, yeah, you're definitely going to impact the gas station. That right, uh, I think that's going to happen regardless, but you definitely would impact that. And then you possibly um, start to impact the, that property next to the gas station because you know, it, you're, you push up, but you've still got to get all the roads coming to it to get there. And so you start having a curve in from different directions. And I, I think I have a layout of that, trying to push it up in there, but you know, every way they looked at it, you're probably going to end up buying three properties.
Okay. All right. And again, I know there, there's always things that that, that an engineer is not considering, but, um, I was, I just want to make sure that we've fully vetted all of the options so that when we make a final decision, we've made an informed decision and haven't perhaps left a good al- alternative on the, uh, on the drawing board. Um, okay. Thank you. That's, that's all I have. I am looking forward to this project moving forward.
I have a quick question.
Hey, quick follow-up with that, with the Tom. I'd love to see that illustration. So you're saying just shifting it and staying where you're showing? Just shifting it to the right up that way? Yeah. Moving it up to the, you know, whatever two o'clock position and to seeing how that would interact. I'd be very curious to see what that would.
I, I think the other issue with the, I'll, I'll find it and, and send it, but I think the other issue is the more you move it up into the triangle, then you, then Mount Vernon has to start cutting into the farmhouse property to get to it. The, the approach coming, uh, coming in from the west or the east, going westbound. Then you have to start curving Mount Vernon up into the farmhouse to get to where the center of the roundabout is.
So I have questions just about, so, cause you know, I get confused on some of this stuff. So when you, if you'll go to the slide that showed current in 2044, like the no build.
Yes, yes.
So what I see here is, is that it's equally bad as it is now, but, but not necessarily terribly worse. But but not necessarily terribly worse. Like when I look at the colors and and it's not that I think traffic is good now. I think it's terrible and I'm often stuck in this particular area in the evening, but. Am I correct in understanding the diagram?
Yes, it's it's worse, but not terribly worse. I mean, the the some of those queues get a little longer.
But this is modeling, right? This is.
And it's a long time out.
Right, I understand. So my question is, so so having. Given a lot of thought to time and traffic say, you know, again, if you save someone a minute a day. It's five minutes a week. So that's. I, you know, I think that's a really important point when we talk about traffic solutions. I think everybody's time is valuable, but. Then you add like what we're spending on the interstate to save each individual fifteen seconds or whatever it's going to be. And it will have cost us a lot more than that to get to the point. So when you, if this is a primarily a beautification and a pedestrian safety project, just in educate me. Because to me, a traffic circle would be the opposite of pedestrian safety because no one would ever have to stop. Not necessarily.
You know, a dual lane roundabout maybe is a little more complicated, but but single lane roundabouts are. Safe for pedestrians.
I understand they're safe for pedestrians, but one of the things that makes downtown Roswell. Downtown Roswell is that the traffic has to go slow enough. That people feel like they can cross between the sides. And they can have a conversation. Now, we're we're too wide. We're wider on Shambly Dunwoody than they are on whatever the name of that street is. Canton Street, thank you. And so. I don't, again. It seems to me that a tra- a traffic circle, which is not necessarily a terrible idea, but it's almost contradicting the idea that we want to make it feel like a village. If cars are going to flow unrestricted, which is not a reason to keep the status quo, right? I don't want anyone sitting in traffic. I also don't think we can afford to purchase three commercial properties. I don't and also have a heartache about putting somebody out of business. I mean, that's. And so um, I have a lot of heartache about that actually. So but I just, I just. Was a little confused. Now, a data question I have is, and I see that this is no build from two thousand eighteen, is this, have we? The effects, the primary effects of the pandemic are pretty much over, right? We people are in theory back at. Their offices, but they're not at perimeter. Have, do we, are we back to two thousand eighteen levels in Dunwoody?
No, we're just using two thousand eighteen because everything since then is kind of hard to rely on.
Right, okay. Because because unfortunately. As long as people aren't coming regularly to their office buildings. Right? That impacts some of this too. And we don't, I'd like them all to be back tomorrow, but they're not listening. And so, um, okay. So what did you need from us tonight? Well, oh, and then I had a wire question. Sorry, one other quick question. A wire question. Could we bury a segment for less than eight million or once you start, you have to do it all?
No, we could do a segment.
Because the Georgetown was going to be a million, a million and a half for the segment we were going to maybe do, or maybe we never.
Right, right. Yeah, you you could just do a segment. It'll be, it'll still be expensive, but you can break it up.
Okay.
But just to kind of close the loop on the traffic, so. I think, you know, part of while we presented the traffic originally and some of the challenges, I think to set expectations. Like with the Georgetown Gateway, it's like, hey, we're doing this road project, but it's it's not a project to solve all the traffic problems that, you know. Don't think when the project's done that traffic's all of a sudden gonna. Just flow great. So. So there are going to be some challenges. But, you know, we're projecting out twenty years, so there's some uncertainty in that. We don't know what's going to happen with different.
Right.
Modes and and whether people are going to be, you know, telecommuting more. I mean, a lot can change in twenty years. So and then, like you said, we're also. Focusing here on the very peak periods of the day. Now we do, you know, the lunchtime.
Oh, I think Saturdays in the in the village are pretty much as bad as it gets. Like in the middle of the day, it's terrible.
So we, but we are, you know, kind of looking at the worst case scenario. And and one thing I've thought about is. You know, I think the roundabout has some challenges for for all the things that everybody has said, but. You know, we're going to need to move forward with a project to use this money we're getting and. It 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 would not be cheap, but it's all we're also talking over a long term period. I mean. There's nothing to say if we build our streetscape. And in ten or fifteen years, somebody comes in and says, hey, we we should put a roundabout here. The, you know, you can see here. The amount of rework. On Shambly Dunwoody, there's really not much to the south and to the north. It doesn't go much past the farmhouse, so. It's it's not like you would be building a whole long stretch of road that you would have to redo. So that that's.
Good point.
So, so I think what I need from, you asked what we need from council is we're, you know, we're getting ready to move forward. And hopefully in the next couple months, we'll get an agreement from G dot and bring that back to you, but. The. Unless we hear otherwise, what we're moving forward with is this corridor with bicycle pedestrian streetscape improvements. The minor uh, lane improvements at at Mount Vernon. You know, no roundabout, no extra lanes on Shambly Dunwoody and. We will explore um, burying utilities on a segment or any other options. One thing I thought about is. Maybe you get rid of all the cross wires. And you still have the poles on one side, but you get rid of anything crossing the road. Um, so we can look at those options, but. That's kind of the direction where we want to make sure we're headed in this in agreement with council.
Could I ask a consensus just to investigate, uh, working with Richard about some elimination of some curb cuts? In the village that I bet Shambly Dunwoody. For best practices.
We we have, we do have a few of those in the plan where it it looks like it wouldn't be too hard to do. Where you really get into, if you want to take. Take one away where it really impacts my where that really comes in is in the. Right away phase where somebody actually. Puts a valuation on, you know, removing that, removing one. But again. You know, we're going to face a budget challenge on this project to. Even with, even without utilities or any of these major improvements, it's we're. We're gonna have to uh, figure out how much we can bite off at one time and and work within a budget, I think.
Okay, so. You have what you need from us, or do you want us just to nod our heads?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
It seemed like everybody was.
Right, just keep, keep on working. Right. All right, you're next for resurfacing.
Okay, I think this is a pretty straightforward. We put out bids recently for our twenty twenty three. Paving, um. And we're, you know, even with escalating costs and things, we we've got some good bids. We a good contractor blunt who's done a lot of our paving was the low bidder. And. Uh, their bid was. The base bid not including optional streets. Is within the budget that we had allocated for this year for paving. We're we're recommending to approve the. The base list of streets and then there are two streets that we had listed in our plan as optional leisure. Leisure Lake Drive and Chadwell Lane, I believe. And so we're. Recommending to approve the contract. With those two as optional and then so that we'll have a contingency and if. If we don't use our contingency and have money, we can add those in before we're done paving this year. We've done that in past years. We haven't had to do it in a couple of years, but that's our recommendation for this year.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead. How many years have we used block block construction now for paving?
The last contract was five years and then we went out for new bids this year and they were the low bidder. So it'll be the sixth year.
And within the past five years. I I I don't remember ever having a problem with them. It seems like they've always come in. Where they said they were going to. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they've they've done good quality work and and at a good price.
Okay, good. Thank you. John.
Thank you. So that was one of my questions. So we have a a new contract with blunt and it's a five year contracts. We have four more years with them.
Uh, we just did one year this year with. One, because we're due for a a rerating of the roads and we're going to develop a new plan this year.
It's my next question.
And then two, just with. Inflation and different things, we just said, well, we're just going to do one year this year.
All right. So as far as the laser truck, when are we scheduled to do the laser truck next?
This year. We're ge- getting ready to release a uh, request for qualifications and get a contract here in the next couple of months and. Get them in here to do that.
Yeah, I was looking at what's online and the dates at the bottom of the ratings. So it would show nineteen, twenty, twenty one. It was confusing. So we're getting new ratings. So thank you. So once the ratings are done, in the past, we have done a five year paving plan. Aspect. Are we thinking of doing that again? Or the last couple of years, we've sort of. Finished out. The end of the five year plan, but are we looking to do another five year paving plan? And if so. Where do you think we'll be in that five years? Will we finish out the inventory?
Yes, we are planning when we get the new ratings, we'll do a new five year plan and we'll bring that to council. I think that will take us to um. About year eighteen or nineteen, I think. And then so we'll be pretty close to the end of a twenty year cycle for the neighborhood streets. So I think. I think at when we have the new five year plan, there will be very few of any. Neighborhood streets that still haven't been put on the list.
All right, um, final question. I was looking at the map. I don't know if you have it in front of you. I'm sure you know that the area I'm talking about. Uh, Brook Run Park, it shows the street all the way running through Brook Run Park. We have added a back exit. Um, from Brook Run over to an access road, putting us near Barclay, near the fire department. Who owns the road, the access road going along the fire department? Back to our back entrance. It seems like that is heavily used by. City residents or city people who are using Brook Run Park. Who uses or who controls the street on? The access road to Barclay. The maintains it. It doesn't show anything on your map. It barely, I I it might be a yellow line.
Pink line, yeah. That's owned by the uh, assisted living or the the facility that's there at the end of that road.
At the very end.
They own the road. The city has a um. An access easement on that road.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if if there, if we only have an easement, do we have any responsibility to make sure that that's paved as it's? It's really a back end exit for our. Public, main public park.
Yeah, I can, we can check with Brent. I can't remember what the language in that easement was, uh, if it makes us responsible for any maintenance or just. Access.
Okay, again, I just, I saw that as a small little piece of. Street that I didn't know who controlled, but I saw it as an instrumental. Access point to the back of Brook Run, so I wanted to make sure it was well maintained, if at all possible by our control.
And also just to point out, I think it changed hands. Maybe, and so we better make sure that. Everything is in order there.
Again. Right, I'd be happy to own that piece of property if it's our back access to the, you know, to our park. I just, I I don't have all the legalities, but I want to make sure you look at it from that perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Catherine.
So the re, the 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 surveying again, we'll anticipate the results. Summer, is that roughly what we're talking about?
That we're telling them that everything has to be complete final report and everything by September first, I believe.
September first.
So we'll have preliminary before then, but you know, the contract will be over, but. As soon as they rate it, we will get. Get some preliminary data.
Okay, all right. So we're more than five years from reaching a hundred percent, but when we hit the twenty years and we look at the next twenty years. Is all this paving work going to make it easier the next time?
Yes.
Yes, because we've.
Yeah, we.
Standardized or. Upgraded or.
Yeah, if as long as we keep doing the what we've been doing. You know, the next, the next time we go through the pave the neighborhoods. Should be easier and um. It won't be cheaper because of inflation, but it. It would be cheaper on a. Present day value, I guess, because we won't have to do as much work. Bringing the street up. To, you know, what it, from what it was when we started doing this.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hey, Michael, um. It's not not on this year, but um. I can go look it up afterwards. Do you happen to know when Old Springhouse Lane is scheduled to be? Done?
It it's not on a schedule right now because we just are going through the last year of our current five year. And then when we get the new five year, we'll. At that point, we'll pretty much be able to say when any neighborhood streets can be get done, because if it's not in the five years, it'll be year six or year seven, probably.
There's some opportunities to do some reconfiguration with existing lane wiz to for traffic calming. And so on. And I know that would be a great connectivity until we get with G dot and build a trail along twenty five, you know, to get to the. Bridge down there to go to two bridge. Two bridges? Two bridges, right? Yeah, part. Um, but in general, I see mostly, um, obviously the roads this year are are really, really truly neighborhood residential roads and streets. And do any of these have existing, like if they have speed tables, you're going to keep the speed tables that exist if they're already there. Um, do we have any potential new ones that, um, or does that have to go through the neighborhood? Uh, traffic calming policy?
Yeah, it goes through the traffic.
Yeah, we can do that. But as far as looking at the lane wids, um, if we do have an option or opportunity to. Do we, do we paint outside? Lines on these or no?
Any of these.
No.
Um, that I can.
None of these. So it's not, it wouldn't be like a North Peachtree through Kingsley, uh, option, option, opportunity there on these. Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Just a quick question. It's more for. My information, uh, is the laser truck evaluation happening after this year's paving or or?
Uh, it'll probably happen.
Concurrent with it.
Happen before.
I mean, and obviously you'll know which roads are being paved this year. I was just kind of curious when the report comes out, it may show. Different stats of the roads that were paid this year.
We'll be able to filter out anything that we've done this year.
Okay, consent. Thank you, consent.
Thank you.
Next up, bus stops.
Good evening. Um, this is the discussion of the Marta bus contracts. Uh, there are two contracts, ones for. The right away and the bus shelters, and there's also an advertising contract. They were s- signed in. Uh, two thousand eight, uh, it was a fifteen year agreement. It actually expired on ju-. December thirty first of last year. It was extended for six months. So. What I was told was that there were some. Grumbling about the advertising. Um, so Marta is. Has their engineers and their uh, designers. Drafting their contract, so we have not seen it yet. But I just wanted to. Reach out to you all. Uh, we also. Share it in some monies. The city. Uh, shares fifty percent of their advertising revenue. Um, so we get about. Ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars depending on the. The ad- article here. Um, if we were to take um, the advertising. Element off, assuming we convince them to do that. They would probably uh, say. We'd have to clean up the the bus shelters because it's in that agreement with the contractor, so.
We can pick up the trash is what you're saying. Okay, just wanted to make sure people do what you were talking about.
So I just wanted to. Put it out there for you all to uh, see.
So we don't have to make any decisions tonight because we don't even have an idea of the contract. And I got earlier. End of last year, middle, whatever. I got the information from Marta about. Each stop in Dunwoody and shocking how many have no riders. None. But unfortunately, a few of the ones that have the largest amount of riders have no shelter. And so my intention is to work with the Art. Council, our Art Commission and get that rectified. Because we, they they do have like an app, they do have like a, I'll send it to you all. But they do have like a plan for non, not non traditional, but for, they have a word for it, like when a city provides. And then I think one of the questions could be, I didn't count like how many shelters we have. One of the questions we could decide is that we want. A unified shelter. And we had to figure out how to pay for it. And then we also have to figure out if we say no more advertising, how we're going to clean them up. But I think we already do some cleaning up. No, ever. I don't know. Sometimes when things we get complaints.
Yeah, we usually call Marta.
So.
Marta will come out.
Sometime in the next six months, we should have an idea of what they're suggesting. Then we can begin a dialogue, I think, with Marta to say. Um, and I'll send you the packet. That I have from Marta that shows different things. But we do need to put shelters where there. But we do need to put shelters where there are people actually using them, right?
Yeah, this, the development, uh, perimeter marketplace, just put the shelter back in, but it has no advertising on it, so.
Right, because I think they own it.
Right.
But maybe I'm wrong.
They don't own it because.
Oh, because it was there already?
Right.
But on North Shalaford, I think they're putting a shelter as part of the construction of the medical thing, and then they would not have to have advertising. Well, I don't know exactly, we need to find out.
Yeah.
Okay. And they left a pad at the proposed school site, they have, we left a pad, I guess Michael left, but where we can, there used to be a shelter there, actually, I think. So, anyway, right, Michael, we left a pad there for a future bus stop? Okay. Okay. In Georgetown, where there was a stop there already, I think, so, okay. So you, we just need to, questions for anybody, we just need to wait to get more information from MARTA.
Talked to MARTA, uh, they do not share information lightly.
Right, and I have a contact, and I'm not sure he's still there, but I emailed him today to ask a question, because the numbers are so low for many of our buses, like zero for many of our, which shouldn't surprise us, because we see the buses. But where there are people, there are at least several stops that don't have any kind of cover.
Yeah, we have three routes in the city of bus routes.
Right. Right.
After Dunwoody is certainly convinced a lot.
I, I don't have questions as much as I have comments, I guess, just to share my opinion to the world here. Um, I would be interested to figure out the cost to clean up MARTA stops, uh, because I would like to see the ads just pulled from them. I, that, that's actually one issue that I got comments on when I was campaigning, and since I've taken office, is complaints about ads on MARTA stops, either from an aesthetic standpoint, or it's tough for me to make a right turn, because the stop blocks my ability to see well to the left. Um, so, to my mind, if it's, if we're making seventeen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, th- that doesn't seem worth it, if the, the cleanup cost is, is low.
It doesn't, however, it also includes like maintenance on the, the show and everything.
So I, I would be interested to see kind of just a ballpark estimate for that, just so we have that to work with. You know, I like the idea of kind of a, a more unified shelter concept for the city that looks nicer in general. Um, and it's totally unrelated to this, but the bus lines in the city spur off of either the red line or the gold line, and there's no good east-west connection between them. And I think it's probably a conversation for later, MARTA, but boy, it would be great if you took the Doraville line up, that you could get to the perimeter easy, or vice versa. And we don't have that right.
We're working on that with the top end, like that's, the whole thing is east-west, we're not, but we decided we can't call it bus, even though it's Bus Rapid Transit, so it's rapid transit at the moment. So, but we are working on that, go ahead, Catherine.
In the contract, even years ago, they were talking about solar and areas where they couldn't have electricity.
Right.
What if we led the way in solar, what if we put that on all our bus stops? You know, what if we had a little charging area, it, solar's gonna, you know, it's cheaper, cheaper every day. Yeah, let's think big.
Yeah, so that's why we wanted to bring it back to generate some ideas, so that when we get it, we have a list of.
In the initial conversations with the Art Commission has gone something along the line of maybe a yearly print that changes, you know, like there's a competition every year, and then enhancing maybe with metal, s- metal work, like every structure may be the same, but and the, the main piece of art may be the same, but the attachment, you know, I'm not very good at any of this, but the butterflies or whatever they put on there might be slightly different, but easy to make, what?
Very Parisian.
Yeah, Parisian or something, so I don't know. All right, so you'll keep us up to date and I'll engage, oh, John, sorry.
I'll jump in from the historical perspective, this has been on my radar for ten plus years. Um, I fought this issue with, uh, advertising and lighted signage in places that it really was not appropriate. Uh, we did not sign a contract, we fought back on MARTA, we, we scaled back the amount of advertising and bus stops where they didn't need to be and tried to put them where they needed to be, so we were successful by not having a contract and pushing back, now that the contracts are, even the contracts that everybody had are expired. So we are looking at, um, changes completely. I am very pleased with the conversations of council and the thoughts and the ideas moving forward to changing it all out with the lack of advertising. And, uh, the, the lighting that could be sold or that could be muted, but putting shelters where they're needed is an important thing, because I can think of, you know, a number of locations that really need these shelters for people to use the buses. Um, but, um, I'm looking forward to this conversation and, uh, looking at the contract to, uh, make a, uh, hard decision when it comes in front of us. So thank you very much.
We given you enough?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, public comments? If there's, everybody's at home watching the football game, sorry, um, city manager comments?
Uh, council members, we need to go into a very, very brief executive session, and this will be on a different topic than usual. Cybersecurity has been added to Georgia law as one of the topics of executive session, and we need to discuss that.
Okay. Um, all right, council comments?
Look, I, I just want to thank what we show, it was a short agenda, but what, what Jay presented with the twenty twenty-two, um, you know, retreat and what we've actions on, it's really, um, we, we, I'm very pleased and proud of where we've gotten and what we've seen and having in the reports and so on. It's a great, great opportunity to process improvement and so on. Uh, my analogy for twenty twenty-three, I always gotta have analogies, that we are down by six points. There's two minutes left in the game, and we're at the twenty-yard line, we're on the red zone offense, so now we gotta get a goal, we gotta get it, gotta, we gotta run it into the end zone now, we gotta get it in, we're in the twenty-yard line, and, 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 and get that point after attempt, thank you.
Uh, I need a motion, if there's no, oh, oh, sorry, Catherine.
So sorry, I read a great book over the holiday called High Conflict, Why We Get Trapped and How We Get Out. There's a lot of good conflict here in the city, we get a lot of citizen input, citizen discussion. This, I think, is a very valuable book that I'm giving you all up here a copy to read, it talks a lot about the us versus them. Here we are, we are physically separated from constituents sometimes, and I think it's good to keep in mind how we continue to stay on the same team, um, a lot, some of the examples like gangs in Chicago don't play out as, you know, well for us, but there is a chapter on city council, so I think it's worthwhile, I hope you enjoy it. Thank you for a good year of service, I really have learned a lot from y'all.
Move to exit to executive session for purposes of cybersecurity.
I will second that.
And I'd I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a business item uh for cybersecurity. And I'd like to make a motion then.
Wait, wait, wait. I think we have to have a second to. Second by John, move by Rob. Any discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's fine. I just.
Um, hearing none, that passes.
At a different time, that's that's fine, but I I don't.
All right. Now I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, city manager, or their designee.
I don't get to do that if I'm around someone and you.
To execute all documents necessary and proper for a contract with Sensado.
And now that. Um, if you need to have a conversation with your department, that's fine.
The amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars with authorization to add an additional amount up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. To accommodate for additional devices or expansion of our systems using the cyber cybersecurity ARPA two budget for funding.
Second, uh, move by Rob, second by Stacy. Any discussion? Uh, John?
This my item was added during executive session. It was not briefed or to the public and or to council prior to executive session. We're voting on this now. Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, but this item will be added to the agenda packet that is online in tonight's meeting.
That is correct.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the transparency is there so that all documents are available online. That's allowed to be. Thank you.
And cybersecurity is a newly added by the state legislature to be able to discuss privately. Any um, further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Joe.
Taking.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none, we are stand adjourned.
All right.